All good?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to council on Monday, June 28th, 2021. Called to me at order at 4:00 P. M. As always, any disclosure, sorry, remind everybody to turn off their electronic devices other than the ones we're on. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Your worship, item 12B will be deferred to the July meeting as councillor Valance has sent his regrets for today's meeting.
Okay, well, B. Nothing else? Okay, I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, June 28, 2021, regular meeting of council as circulated or amended. Move by.
Councillor Lake.
Councillor Shingra.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Any disclosure of interest today? Hearing none. I do have a motion that council hereby adopts the minutes that were of the regular meeting of council held on Monday, June 14th, 2021, and the closed meeting of council held on Monday, June 14th, 2021, circulated and amended. Move by.
Councillor Shingra.
Councillor Lake.
Any arrows or missions in those minutes that you've seen? Everything's good. Call a question on the favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Up next, we have report on the Corpus Strategic Plan 2021 Progress Report to Date, Mr. Skorchinsky.
Thank you. So the Town Marathon Strategic Plan was endorsed by council in May of 2019. The plan identifies the town and marathon's goals over that timeframe with a focus on five key areas. These include quality of life, infrastructure, economic development, fiscal resiliency, and progressive leadership. A component of the plan is to complete regular performance reviews and present them to council. Performance review and measurement ensures that the plan and strategies contained within it are reviewed and adjusted accordingly. While the COVID-19 pandemic has still engaged much of the town's senior leadership team in 2021, much hard work has continued day to day to advance our plan and ensure community development remains a cornerstone. Key progressions to date in 2021 include construction of the new Peninsula Golf Course clubhouse, which we're hopeful we can fully open soon with our inspections in the process of being completed this week. Development of a new investment attraction marketing program for the former mill site that'll be launched this fall. Development and rollout of the fiber to home broadband project in partnership with Terrace Bay and TB Tel, which will also also roll out this fall. Demolition of 14 Peninsula, which was obviously formerly the DH Mall in preparation of the site for new development. Continued development of the natural gas project, including negotiation of a gas supply agreement with Sir Terrace. Unfortunately, we didn't receive provincial funding, but it doesn't mean the project is not still very much valid. We're looking at contingency plans with respect to that project. Implementation implementation of the Community Development Assistance Program in 2021, continued upgrades and enhancements in the boat launch area, including the completion of the fish cleaning station, which is set to open in the coming weeks, as well as creating the Waterfront Recreation Development Committee. Support of the Group of Trail Seven, Group of Seven Trails Association, which council utilizes the municipal accommodation tax to support. Continued support for the healthcare professionals recruitment, which is a partnership between the town, the Northspire Healthcare Group, the Marathon Family Health Team, and Barrick Gold, and support of the Marathon Beautification Group for Community Beautification. And thanks to the volunteers that now have the flowers planted and Peninsula Road looking so much better. Other items that remain on the books that the town will be undertaking through 2021 include development of all development of an alternative funding plan for the Active Living Centre, Pebble Beach Area Development Planning with construction plan for 2022, the 2022 municipal election planning, and new residential development planning in the context of looking at what a development might look like with respect to a new generation PGM mine. So these are some of the projects identified in the strategic plan that have been or will be or financially projects identified in the strategic plan have been or will be included in the yearly municipal budgets as identified. And this report is presented for council's information and questions.
Great, thanks for that report. Questions of Mr. Skorchinsky, councillor Lake.
Thank you, your worship. What I love is that idea that we're looking at the strategic plan. I think lots of municipalities make them because you have to, and then kind of do whatever they want and don't stick to the plan. I think that's one of the things our administration does really well. The one thing that I'm really happy to hear on that is the planning, you know, for growth potentially. I just I remember the town when Hemlo first went and the scramble that we had. I love to see that idea of being out in front of saying if we're going to have to grow, if we're gonna have to change, let's be out in front and lead it. It was a bit of a disaster last time just because of the timelines. So I think that's again speaks to good planning, and I appreciate seeing that coming from administration.
Great, thanks for that, councillor Lake. Councillor Shingra.
Yeah, just a comment on how impressive the list is of accomplishments, especially given how much COVID has slowed down other organizations. This this list really shows that that administration has really worked hard on on these different projects. So thank you and congratulations on all the work for to all the administration.
Great, thanks. Councillor De Bushy?
Yeah, with regard to the natural gas project now, it was obvious that the funding models were specific to certain writings, I'll say. And we've done or the administration has done what they can according to the rules. Can council do on the political side to try and move this project forward? I mean, it's a viable project. It's, you know, if we do get growth with generation mines, it's a viable project that will keep their costs down. It'll keep the cost down for Barrick moving forward if they were able to develop it. So since we tried to play by the rules and and the or sorry, we played it the way that you're supposed to do going through the channels. What now can we do as council or our MPP do, even though he's not an official party member? What can we do? Is there something that we should develop as council to try and get this project moving forward? Because, you know, the intake may come again. I mean, we know that that these projects are, you know, partially funded through, you know, the surcharge on natural gas usage. So is there something we can do? Because if we just play by the rules, we're gonna get bypassed again, I would feel.
So I don't know, Mrs. Kortenski, want to start to answer that question or follow up on an answer?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, the Americans speak to the politics of it. You know, obviously, we were frustrated with the province's announcement, knowing that they increased the fund to support a number of other projects that aren't even shovel ready comparison to ours. But with respect to going forward, there was a shuffle in cabinet recently. We have been in contact with the Ministry of Energy and the mayor and I do have a meeting on July 5th with the new minister Todd Smith. I don't know what that's gonna hold other than it's probably the quickest I've seen an energy minister get back to us to set up a meeting, which was in less than a week. So I'm hopeful that we can educate on our project. I think, you know, going forward, the original model of the natural gas project was never predicated on a government grant. We built the initial model on a phased in approach that was built on commercial lending. So what we're gonna go back and do now is is relook at the capital cost estimate and relook at a financial sensitivity analysis around that, and then rebuild the financial model, which will probably take us about 30 to 60 days. But it doesn't fundamentally fundamentally impact the project. You know, it's it's always nice to get a grant because it's essentially free money you're not paying interest on. But the way we'll relook at the project is, you know, now we're gonna look at the phased approach so we can generate revenue to cover off those borrowing costs. So the project still is moving forward from an administrative perspective. But I'll let the mayor speak with respect to the political side of it.
Yeah, I think you pretty well summed up the the answer for councillor De Bushy. The political part of it, I think we banged on every door we possibly could. We had many, many meetings. We identified a super project for five communities along the North Shore, impacting up to potentially 13,000 customers with the assistance for the big industry as well, councillor De Bushy. So we can't, we couldn't couldn't do any more political lobbying, I don't think, at that point, at this point. Other than now doing a post announcement of funding to to get an understanding of what we can do if there is any new programs or funding coming forward with with Minister Scott to see if there's any angles. So I do think the approach of looking at and the original approach was to borrow the money and to have a very low interest over a 30 year capitalization program and then see how that looks. And I think the the idea did look pretty good. So we can, as Mrs. Kortenski said, revisit that and then maybe break back presentation to the five municipalities and see where that goes. Councillor Lake.
Thanks, your worship. For the CEO, I mean, I think you look at that gas project, I guess this question is kind of like that, like I and councillor Jingra is right. It's a pretty impressive list, given that we're a pretty small municipality. We just had COVID. But looking forward into this last kind of year of council, what's the what's the thing that maybe not keeps you up at night, but what's the thing that we can do as as council for administration? What's the block? You know, if you could get something done, what do we need to be thinking about in order to make sure we're successful over this next year in finishing off some of those strategic plan items?
I don't think we change anything, to be honest. I think, you know, as a municipality, you know, we're always quite successful, you know, because we plan appropriately and we plan, you know, in increments that are achievable, right? And I think, you know, if you look at the list for 2021, you know, councils obviously heavily involved in, you know, repopulating that list every year. But, you know, I think is the biggest thing, you know, in my mind, you know, as a municipality that we can do, knowing the potential development that's on the horizon is ensuring that we plan our infrastructure requirements appropriately. You know, and the broadband is a good example. So is natural gas, right? So, you know, as a municipality, you know, we can't control businesses coming or going. We can do our best to attract them, but the most important thing is ensuring that we have the infrastructure in place or on the books to support that. And I think, you know, every year we look at that, and that's really important.
Councillor De Bushy?
On a follow up to the the gas project, then, should we now then take the tack that this as a business model, no longer relying on government funding and then present that to the energy minister? Because one of the stumbling blocks also will be the securing of a of a natural gas supply. And there is some control that the government will have over that, other than just free the total free market system. So are we in conjunction with the other communities? Are we looking at now looking at a, you know, public utility or in that portion? Because once we, once you kind of, I'll say, I'll say threaten, but look at developing small natural gas, I'll say, you know, utilities, the bigger players get a little nervous about cutting up the pie. And maybe they'll come to the table as part of the, you know, partners, because they have to spend some of that money to expand natural gas, because they they surcharge natural gas users to develop those projects.
So so I think Mrs. Kortenski can follow up on the answer, but I think he answered the question in regards to revisiting the financial breakdown in the the borrowing of those dollars originally we looked at rather than having government grants and and then bringing that back to the municipalities over the next 30 to 60 days. And then from there, we can then come up with a strategic plan through the municipalities with the LDC, the local distribution company, to look at how does that all look with the gas supply contract that was negotiated with Sir Terrace? So a lot of the key things are in place. The big thing that we were waiting for anticipation to the OAB, the OAB was to have that government announcement of some funding for the project. So let's see what happens over the next couple of months, as Mrs. Kortenski said, and and work from there. Meeting with Minister Scott on on the 5th and then having that those highlights brought to his attention and then see what comes out of that. Daryl, is Mr. Kortenski, you have anything else to add to that?
No, I think you nailed it, your worship. And I think, you know, again, this, you know, I think of this project in the same terms of, you know, how we envisioned and built supportive housing. This is really a highly innovative project and I and not to be critical, but I think sometimes the higher levels of government have a hard time interpreting that. And I think, you know, there was recently a project that was announced in Northern BC that is really a parallel to ours, where communities off pipeline and First Nations are going to utilize, you know, a virtual gas supply like we have envisioned. So, you know, I think we just likely need a little more time. Hopefully, we have a new open minded minister and we continue to push merits to forward the project like we have since 2015.
Yeah, you want to follow up with that, councillor De Bushy, or are you good?
Yeah, no, just the other one about the the Energy Board itself, then. Do we have permission or can we go move forward? Because we do will need permission from the Energy Board to proceed with this project. So on the political side or that side, do we put pressure on, you know, the minister and ask for, you know, support on this thing, even if it isn't financial?
No, the the Ontario Energy Board process is is apolitical. It's purely, you know, tech or technology and economics based, to be completely honest. The only piece we were waiting on to go forward on our application was the economics, because we couldn't submit it without knowing we had the grant or we didn't. If council recalls, we already have a phase one approval for a number of our items, including environmental and and land based items. So now it's just a matter of reworking that application and bringing it forward. We have a good rapport with the administration at the OAB. They're well aware of our project. And I honestly don't see any stumbling blocks there. We're in the process of finalizing our consultation process with the 18 indigenous groups that we've had to consult with. So I suspect that probably by September, we'll have a full application to go forward to the OAB.
So Mrs. Kortenski, just remind council too that there's still some available funding that we were approved by through the Heritage Fund for this project to carry those those inquiries and that stuff through the OAB forward.
Yeah, we probably probably have approximately just, you know, roughly about a million dollars left of that funding, which we purposely set aside. It is a very expensive process to go through the OAB because it's legal in nature. And our energy lawyers aren't cheap, but we're still well positioned to take the project forward.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that report. Up next, we have Mr. Verbo in regards to the properties eligible for tax registration, Mr. Verbo.
Good evening, Mayor Council. According to the town's tax collection policy, a list of all properties eligible for tax registration must be presented to council. This list is to be all inclusive. Section 373 of the Municipal Act enables the treasurer to register a tax arrears certificate against the title to that land if there are two years of tax arrears. The properties detailed on the attached schedules have taxes outstanding from 2019 or earlier. Cost of registering properties properly is approximately $2,000 each. All costs associated with tax registration are fully recoverable, but only provided that the property can be sold. In 2020, there were 14 properties that included seven Marathon Pulp Inc. properties eligible for registration. This totaled $52,600 in outstanding taxes, but that's excluding the MPI properties. This year, there are 22 properties, including Marathon Pulp properties. Excluding these Marathon Pulp properties, the exposure is $125,800. 12 residential properties are new to the list. In 2020, there were only three first time residences added. In 2020, there were 14 properties in tax registration totaling $239,000. This year, it's reduced to nine properties with the exposure being $80,000. Administrations are presenting this report for council's information and questions.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Verbo in regards to those tax properties? Councillor De Bushy?
Just on the Marathon Pulp properties, other than the ASB board or properties that we may not want to take over because of some environmental issues, is there any properties that's been identified by administration to register to register so that we can take eventually take it over? I see there are some properties in the, I'll say, the center of town that we may strategically want to look at.
The second page of the report lists those Marathon Pulp properties, and they're all identified as not desirable to the town's needs.
Okay.
So in regards to that, Mr. Verbo, when do we take them off the books after they share those seven properties?
It's up to council. Do we try and sell them?
Well, I think you either take them off the book as a tax registration or you register them as surplus and then try to sell them.
Well, it's, we don't have to take them off the books. What was mentioned with the auditors too is the taxes are raised and we've set up an allowance for doubtful account that zeros them out. Now, the the thing we have to do is if we want to remove them, we have to advertise them for sale. But there's strategic things to think about. Do we want someone from a foreign country to come and own London Island or Moz Island? Or do we just want to leave it there for potential development later on? Or just leave it there and leave it as a natural environment?
So so I would ask Mr. Skorchinsky to bring a report and and for council to discuss that very those very properties. Because, listen, I don't care if somebody comes from from a foreign country and buys a piece of property in Marathon, Ontario. They're gonna build something and pay taxes, and it's gonna help the economic environment in our community. That's what we're all about is development and economic opportunities for anybody. So, great, but I think we need to have a report and identify if those properties are actually feasible enough to sell or not, or just they become part of the town's landmass. Fair enough, council? At least we can have a discussion on it. Okay.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Anything else on that report that anybody has question, Mr. Verbo? Councillor De Bushy, your hand is up or down?
Sorry, it's down.
Okay, thank you. No, I thank you for that report and those, as you identified, those individuals are you're working through all those registered registered properties and hopefully you have a system that those individuals will take seriously. Because in the past, we've had individuals didn't realize the seriousness of their property being tax registered. It's once it's tax registered, you you must make arrangements with the municipality and and you have all the opportunity in the world to make those those required changes to your tax bill, but you have to talk to the town. So it's it's serious. Talk to the municipality. And and we don't want to take anybody's property or home, that's for sure. We want to work with the with the individuals and with the municipality. Mrs. Kortenski?
Sorry, worship, just to clarify your statement, those in with taxes who should contact administration.
Sorry, yeah, yeah, not, yeah, not, yeah. Mr. Verbo?
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, not council, by no means. Thank you for that. Okay, we're all good. Thank you. Up next, we have a check run motion for the the amount of for May, sorry, the following check run for May, and the amounts of accounts payable for $1,263,842.61 and payroll in the amount of $154,378.9. Move or second or?
Councillor Lake.
Councillor Shingra.
Any questions? Any questions of those check runs?
No.
Here and now to call a question on favor?
Yes.
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 Carrie, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna give a verbal update in regards to some meetings I had last week with Noma and and Roma, sorry, Noma and AMO. Noma Board met and discussed various items. We talked through Hydro One, provided an update on the Walga Seating Transmission Line that's going up north through the Pickle Lake and providing opportunities for a lot of our First Nations neighbors up in the northern part of of the province. They they have not yet received the approval from IESO, but they feel very confident in that process. Element Five presented on their affordable housing solution. I asked this the individual to send a copy of that back to the to myself through the town, because I thought it was very innovative where they build the prefab apartment buildings, homes, building. So and and the pricing was actually lower than than a stick built home with with delivery to site, and they brought in a couple of examples, and they're just those down in St. Thomas, Ontario. Very, very good presentation, and those are the opportunities we look at if we're building and looking at the development in Marathon, working with whoever, there's opportunities. That's why I asked to send the information. I know there's other companies out there do that, but at least you have ideas of prefabs, and prefabs today are awesome. They come in in a transport and you put together them in a day or two, and you got a beautifully built stick home, and it's built inside, which is much more controlled and a lot quicker, as we know. Resolution to support the Ontario Heritage Fund application for our funding, because we have not received our $50,000 for the last three years, so we were finally getting some resolution to that. We talked about the issues we're bringing to AMO through the delegations. The resource revenue sharing is one of the big ones. Municipal insurance, we're still all battling that high percentage of increases throughout the province, specifically in North, we're seeing some big increases. Railway tax, we still haven't let that go. We want that on on the table, and we actually had a minister ministerial meeting before the switch up, and the minister did agree that, you know, there's still some some room to talk on that, so it's not a dead issue. COVID recovery includes payments in lieu of crown land and conservation tax as well. And then a couple other issues around wastewater infrastructure funding additional. Additionally, Noma and Phenomena and NASDA will conduct a joint delegation meeting with mental health and addictions and housing. And that's a big part of the, you know, roof over individual said in Marathon, as as you know, we did apply for a funding model for a transitional type housing. Well, in a lot of other places, a lot of mental health issues with needs of homes and roofs over their head. And when they're on the street, they tend to have more impact on your mental health. We also met with minister to talk about the funding payments and the stability of that. They did assure us obviously it's 21 was gonna be there. We asked that fund be the same going forward, 500 million lease, if not increased, and no changes, no drastic changes, just leave it as it is and increase it with maybe the COLA or or inflation. And and we know we have sustained funding going forward, because every time you turn around, the the rules change around the the percentage that you receive to your municipality based on your financial means. And of course, we got our financial means are adjusted by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. Ministry of Transportation discussed their five year plan in Northwestern Ontario and discussed winter maintenance issues. So that was a very meeting we have with them. And of course, they're familiar with my my name because of the the constant awareness of our road conditions through the winter. They're doing a really good job, and I did praise them on that in regards to the bike lanes they're adding on on our parts of the highways for the safety of our biking community. So that's a good thing, and then I got a map, but the map is not really, it shows all the areas they're gonna be doing over the next five years. But I'm gonna ask Jamie to highlight maybe the names of where they are, because they're not, they're just a highway and shows a mile number, you know. It's a ministry document more than a layman document for us to understand, like, is that by Rossport or is that mile number 6123 type thing, right? So I'll get a more better one I'll share with council if she sends one to me. Provide also more input in driver's examinations process and input for us to have. So they're gonna meet with Thunder Bay Municipal League as well as Noma to have input for planning. So we've asked for that over the years many times. So when they're doing a plan design, let let us have at least some input. So they agreed that they would at least talk about it. Also talked to the Minister of Energy and the Energy Board and the Fiber Review of the Natural Gas Supply. I expressed the concerns we had with no funding for Marathon, of course, in the North Shore projects. Also provide a letter of support response to resolution about forward regarding the international bridge between Fort France and Minnesota. And the issues and requests the government of Ontario require the bridge to be made a public asset without tolls, because there's still a toll on that. And of course, we had the updates from all the three different leagues. And that we will be meeting in July with Thunder Bay District simply again, and I'll bring you an update for that meeting. We'll have more updates from the MTO there. As far as the AMO Board, of course, we go through our regular process of the the preliminary committee of the whole on Thursday and then Friday, we had to do the administration reports, get an update on all the different various things that our AMO executive and the policy advisors are working on, and there's many of them, and I give them hats off. They really do a wonderful job, and they talked about our investment policy. We're running a surplus right now. Because of the COVID, we've saved a lot of money, like every organization basically across the province that's funded or has travel costs and meeting costs associated. There's a lot of savings, and we reflect that in our own little council, I know, because of the lack of travel and in person meetings. Then we had the executive director's report talking about the impacts that COVID had on the organization, as well as their rental spot down in Toronto and how that looks. And just give us an overview of what he sees, Brian, sees in regards to AMO's role going forward. And and excited about potentially having our board meetings in the fall in person again, if all goes well with the vaccinations in in Ontario, which we know they are going good. We talked a bit about the community paramedicine policy. The paramedicine policy is a really lengthy discussion around that, is getting paramedics paramedics in our communities doing way more home visits and working with our seniors and people staying in their homes. Because rather than having just PSWs, which there's lack of, the paramedics who Because rather than having just PSWs, which there's lack of, the para, the paramedics who and a lot of times when they're not on calls, they could be visiting and doing home care and uh still leave from there. So there's, there's opportunities and there's also some uh, some opportunities through this paramedicine policy to have um dedicated paramedics, not doing ambulance or bus calls, but just doing home visits. And, and, and working with the people in their community so you keep people in your home. And that would definitely benefit us in, in this part of the world, of course, as well. Um also talked about the doc situations in Ontario through that paramedicine policy. You know, of course, Marathon has been very blessed over the twenty-five or so years with, since nineteen ninety-five, almost thirty years going on. With uh, you know, a, a great team of docs through the family health team. And, and we've always had a really high compliment, whether it's been five or as high as nine or ten. We're now at nine, I think, docs. So I mean, hey, we're a pretty blessed community to have uh that many physicians in our community and really they love the community and, and they really have a, a, a great relationship built with members within the, the the catchment area of Marathon and uh Bitigon and uh, and Pickmoreburg. Uh talked about the blue box updates, of course, we all know about that. You know, we went through that process with our recycling program. The blue box update is going, is still working with the manufacturing. Covid has slowed it down a bit, but it's still projected to be over a five-year period and they're getting some headway on that. Uh LA, LAS uh update, you know, we, we participate in the LAS program where we uh, we get the bulk purchases of fuel and other products uh that, that benefit the municipalities. So that's a great program and LAS is doing really good and have a bit of a surplus. Uh so that's also, and, and of course, AML is not, is a nonprofit organization, so surplus has come back in the form of uh, of other programs or, or benefits to municipalities. Of course, Roma give their update like any organization does. Uh talked about what's happening in rural, uh rural part of Ontario, which is kind of a, a silly fact, but it's, it is rural Ontario, which is the farming communities mostly in Southern Ontario and southeastern and eastern Ontario. Phenom, which is the north west, east, eastern communities. Give us your update in regards to what's happening. Phenom and, and Noma are of course uh, you know, really uh, you know, similar, so that was, it was a close uh update, same with uh Noma, Noma give update. And of course, uh the Covid update funding, working with governments and uh how does that look going forward in the additional uh lobbying for increased funding for assistance to get economics and the economies back in our communities, back in our regions, back in our province, back strong and powerful so that the government can benefit from the new uh form of taxation and, and payroll tax. And uh all, all the wonderful things that a strong economy brings to a province. So that was pretty well lit in a nutshell. Uh any questions? Counsel Lake?
Uh yeah, thanks, your worship. Uh maybe trying to tie a, a couple of the things uh we've been talking about. Uh so I, I'm really interested in the, the prefab buildings you talk about and I, when I think about you know, when we talk about the growth that could be coming, um one of them is, I don't know if it was a mistake, but one of the things got us in trouble the last time a mind came was building uh uh, you know, big blocks of housing. So, i- if, if we look at infilling space we already have and some of that land we've acquired with things like, you know, prefab uh condos, uh things that'd be a little bit more uh people intensive, especially if folks aren't, you know, flying in, flying out, however it's going to look. Um, what's the process for trying to uh, you know, uh, uh attract people that, that, that use those sort of facilities and then negotiating, finding the space that already exists within the municipality in order to put things like that. Like I think of the old Everest place and I know we don't own it, but what a lovely place for a, a condo block, right? That would, that would sort of be pretty people intensive. How do we, as an administration or council, sort of negotiate that?
So, good question, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm just, as we speak, I'm making a quick note here to, to get reach out to Andrew because I haven't seen the actual uh presentation uh yet from the individual, so um I'll, I'll make sure I get that and then maybe we can, I can have uh uh through, through Mr. Skorczynski, set up an actual uh, a virtual uh presentation, maybe through our next council meeting. So we can get a better understanding of what we're looking at for some sort of planning going forward into twenty twenty-two. And working with uh, you know, either Berwick or Generation for their needs. And how's that look? Because I was really surprised and I, I really poked on the, the cost per square footage all in. That means, you know, your, your basement, your slab, your core floor, your shipping, your, your installing, your development and hook the wire up and give the keys to the owner. And it was, I was quite surprised on the pricing. It was, uh, it was quite lower than a, than a stick-built.
And, and I'm imagining they're quite a bit uh more pleasing to the eye than say an Atco trailer or some other temporary fix, right? Like it just uh, it would fit with the community.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. They just built a big place in Kingston and it's a, it's a, it's an apartment building. So it's a prefab apartment building. You build the walls in the factory. Bring them there, put them up, bing, 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 bing. And, and develop. So yeah, they got, they got plans to do all kinds of things, but they also got a lot of money from the, from tribe as well as the provincial and federal governments to, to get this up and off the, off the road. So it's, it's a legit uh uh opportunity and they're working, of course, with First Nations communities as well. So it's a thing of growth is what they're looking at as well. Counsel De Bushi?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'll say excited because we all know that the cost per square foot building in our area and, and I, I assume it's probably the same in more, more smaller, remote communities or non-urban communities. But I, I caution that, I'd like to see the presentation, but I caution that we don't get into the development business. I mean, we can facilitate uh, you know, uh land acquisition or to line transfers. I just want to make sure as part of our plan and as part of our strategic plan about uh development preparedness. This would be a, something that we could, you know, tout, but it's something that I really caution that we don't get into the development business.
Well, I think Counsel De Bushi, with your years of experience and sharing with council, your, your, your beliefs to not be in the bricks and mortar business, I think, I think we really appreciate it and we understand that. We, we are definitely not developers and we don't want to be in the bricks and mortar business. But we also want to bring every opportunity to potential uh development. Or, or, or a company that has an idea to look for housing for employees. Uh the best interest possible, whether it's a stick-built home uh and working with them for development of properties. And the lots we already have existing or, or a uh, a prefab manufacturer of homes is, is this uh element, uh element five is just another company out there that, that has potential to bring in information, I guess. Counsel Bushi?
Yeah, because I think, you know, you in this day and age of fly in, fly out or eating on, working off kind of thing. Uh, you know, condo development would be perfect for this kind of housing because you know, you're only going to occupy it two, two weeks at a time. So, you know, your roommate, you'll never see. You share expenses, but you, you'd never see them or only in crossings. So, you know, again, like I said, I, I, I think that's something that we move forward with the economic development. We move forward with our strategic planning model. But again, we, we should facilitate it, you know, and, and provide these options for it. But I agree, it'd be nice to see because I think we have open lots that, you know, people aren't interested in because of this to, to total, you know, outrageous cost per square foot that is going to cost to build in Marathon. So, you know, again, I think that's something that the strategic economic development should move forward with.
Yeah, and, and uh, no, uh, no, uh, uh, you know, discrimination, I guess I'm going to say the word, but we have no, uh, our contractors overwhelmed in Marathon, they're, they're booked solid. And we don't have that developmental, developmental style contractor in town that's going to come in and say, I'm going to build five homes. Uh and if they're out there, please call us and get ahold of uh our economic development manager and/or, or Mr. Skorczynski and, and, and provide that information, but so we have to provide some, some leads to individuals or to, to companies to say, hey, here's opportunities. We want to work together. And you're right, we got to plan this so that there's no no mass buildup and of things that are going to go wrong and the community gets in debt, you know, well beyond its means. And, and I think we, we know that and we'll do that going forward. Okay, that's my report. Anything else? Okay, thanks. It was awesome. Okay, up next we have uh uh motions uh in regards to the audit was, will be arising under the twenty-two municipal audit will be presented, so um, let me look here. I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the twenty, which, I'm sorry, we had a, a pre uh meeting with the auditors just before this council meeting, so we had an update on our twenty twenty audited reports and uh council is, is now going to accept those at this meeting. That council hereby accepts the twenty twenty financial statements is presented by Grant Thornton on June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. Move by?
Counsel De Bushi?
Counsel Shingra.
Thank you. And uh, any questions of those, that report that we had earlier? Everything was presented properly? We got all the information we needed? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Up next, I have a uh, a, a motion here that council authorized administration to transfer the twenty twenty operating surplus that was presented by the uh auditors of one hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars to reserve working capital. Move by?
Counsel Lake?
I got Counsel Lake first and Counsel De Bushi. Any questions of that motion? Here, now call a question on favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay, up next I have a couple of requests to receive from one from the township of Redu Lake seeking support of the resolution pertaining to the cemetery funding of abandoned cemeteries. Copies to all members. Everybody's had an opportunity to read it. I have a motion here, I'll put on the floor. That the council hereby supports the task resolution received from the township of Redu Lakes. Pertaining to the cemetery funding for abandoned cemeteries. And further, a copy of this motion be forwarded to the individual listed on the originating resolution. Move by?
Counsel Lake?
Thank you.
Counsel De Bushi?
Okay, any questions? Counsel Lake?
Yeah, I, I just, like I, I was thinking about uh, certainly in Southern Ontario, there are lots of them. Uh we have the, the one cemetery behind the golf course. Uh there are the white stones that go up to, is that the, is the municipality um upkeeping that or is that uh somebody, somebody else doing that? And is that the sort of uh structure we're talking about funding for?
Mr. Skorczynski?
Yeah, so uh, that's really a historical cemetery that uh predates the municipality as an incorporated government body. Um generally, it, it is volunteers locally that look after cleaning it up and maintaining it. Um, we have been requested in the past and have done some work there. Um but I think that is a, an excellent example of what the resolution speaks to is municipalities in many cases take on these properties, uh just because they fall within municipal boundaries. Um and in some cases, I would imagine, you know, there would be a large cost to maintain them or, or keep them, you know, up to a standard that's acceptable. And I, I think that's what, that is what the resolution is speaking to.
Yep. Counsel De Bushi?
Yeah, I, I can script the resolution, but the other thing that I, I wanted to touch base because I mean, it's supposedly perpetual care. We're supposed to run a cemetery and the fees or the charges that we charge go on to, to provide the perpetual care, I guess, for eternity. And unfortunately, in some of these instances where cemeteries are, I'll say either connected with a religious group or a, you know, a ethnic kind of group. Uh it falls between the cracks. So the, the issue here is, um, is there any other wa- ways of positioning the government to look at that the responsibility of perpetual care? I mean, i- it's falling on, you know, anybody or, you know, the communities that to maintain, you know, some of these cemeteries, at least in our case. And in cases for profit, where's the assurance? I mean, mining companies have to provide assurances when they close or, you know, event, leave. So is there any other ways that you can look forward in, into that kind of modeling?
So, so I think the first step is to get this resolution passed so that the government recognizes that municipalities will need some sort of assistance sometimes to take care of these abandoned cemeteries to at least have the respect of the individuals that are buried in these cemeteries. We're lucky, ours is a very small uh site. You look at the one up at uh where, you know, Counsel Lake's camp is. The CPR funded that uh because there was community members that worked on the CPR back in the day. So they did a nice job up in that little cemetery. But we need to have the government step up and say this is part of the province of Ontario. These are sites that are, are individuals who lived in our province have passed and been buried, whenever the time was, the date was. And then we go forward. As far as our own Cemeteries Act, uh, a cemetery's guidance through our, the Cemeteries Act, we can look at that fees and structures and perpetual care fund at any time and and adjust that as we see fit to make sure we're taking care of our own cemetery, which is, we're not going to have no new and abandoned cemeteries forever. We got our cemetery and we'll be looking after that. Or somebody will, we belong, we'll be in the cemetery and they'll be still looking after it. Okay? All good? Okay, so I'll call a question on, all in support of this resolution?
Yes.
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 Great. Thank you very much. Up next, we have a resolution from um the city of St. Catharines pertaining to the expanding and testing of all strains of Lyme disease and the treatment and care of those that are diagnosed with this disease. And further, a copy of this motion be forwarded to individual listed on the originating resolution. I need to move her a second to put on the floor.
Counsel Shingra.
Counsel Lake?
Okay, I got Counsel Shingra or Counsel Lake. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments on this resolution? Okay, and nothing, Counsel Lake?
Um, just, I mean, in, in talking to folks from around, apparently there are, you know, the, the ticks that are responsible for Lyme disease are moving into our region. Um, so I wasn't actually, I was under the impression that Lyme disease was something that was screened for anyway. Uh but certainly I think that it is an emerging issue for our region. We used to be sort of out of the Lyme disease area, but I think uh that now impacts us for sure.
Yeah, so basically you're just asking through the municipality, you know, the Association of Ontario. And that uh they uh have uh and improve the level of treatment and care of those diagnosed with the crippling disease. And that they help fund this. So it's more, it's all about funding because if you identify whether you live in Marathon or St. Catharines, this is something that should fall under the Health Act. All good? Call a question on favor?
Yes.
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 There, thank you very much. And prior to adjournment, I have an announcement that uh we will be going into an in-camera meeting to discuss uh right after this meeting. Uh some uh personnel matters about identifiable individual, including municipal local board employees, as well as labor relations and employee negotiations. That'll be directly following this in ca, this public meeting. Uh also would uh like to just make mention that of course, we had our clinic last week in regards to the uh, the Covid nineteen vaccine. It was uh well-attended, five hundred doses given. But we're still really weak on the uh, the, the first doses. There was only about sixty individuals that signed up. So the numbers are really slowing down dramatically on the first doses. So we're at about seventy-one percent in Marathon. We need to get that number higher. We need people to really do some research, talk to some appropriate people, talk to your doc, talk to your friend. And get some more information about the impact that you need, that will have on you uh without getting the, the vaccine uh for travel, movement, uh work, all kinds of things might, might impact your life. And it's, it's just the right thing to do. It's the healthy thing to do to protect yourself and your family members. So get in more informed about that. Uh thanks to all the members who assisted and volunteered at the clinics, they're awesome. We have a couple come up in July. Then there's going to be at least five hundred for each one of those two clinics. That will bring our, our second dose numbers really high, but it'd be nice to see some first dosers get in there as well. And uh, and get their vaccines so we can get our community back to reopened as well as the province of Ontario. Uh also, you know that we already canceled the Canada Day celebrations with step two of the provincial government announcement that allows twenty-five people outdoors at gathering. That ain't going to do it. So there were some people that are frustrated on social media that's saying that, you know, the municipality is not doing anything. Yeah, we're not doing anything because we can't do anything. So, you know, we, what are we going to do? We can do a parade, but that's not appropriate. So let's, let's just work on something and uh if things work out to the best of our ability, we can do something in the future, but for now we are tied by the government's mandate and rules. We can't do Canada. I really wish everybody has a great day. Take some time, spend with your family. Go and enjoy our great outdoors in Marathon. We have wonderful trails, wonderful lakes, uh Lake Superior. We've got lots of places to go and enjoy and play and have a good day. But we with the municipality are very frustrated, like you are, we can't do Canada Day celebrations, so we will see you all next year. Hopefully it'll be uh bigger and better. But for now, uh just bear with us, we're following the rules of Covid nineteen. And that's why our Canada Day celebrations are not happening in twenty twenty-one. Okay, uh that's it. We will adjourn at the hour of uh four forty-eight. I need to move her a second for that, please.
Counsel Lake?
Counsel Shingra.
Thank you very much and we're going to team camera right after this. Thank you. Goodbye.